Disclosure of community or interest in general nature thereof. Yes, councillor Starchuk?
Yes, I have a community interest item eight point two. It's the City of Timasping Shores letter of support rural transit solutions fund funding application.
Anybody else? Okay, number three, public meetings or none. Item four deputations delegation integrity commissioner report presentation re councillor Cooper by E for M I C consultant. Colleen Hanigan, I understand Colleen is ill, so Peggy Lovelace will be the delegation tonight. Peggy, if you could come up.
Thank you, your worship. I apologize that Ms. Hannigan is not able to be here this evening. She did have every intention of presenting this report. Unfortunately, she just does not have a voice to see at this moment, so it's a little hard for her to speak. So I'm going to give you an overview, well, actually, I'll just read her word for word because it's not very long. So this is the IC's response to a request for inquiry regarding councillor. The IC's office, we received any request for inquiry into the behavior of councillor Harry Cooper at the July 12th, 2023. Committee, the whole meeting, the meeting is open to the public, reported and posted on YouTube as from the town's website. The allegations included a complaint of harassment, which have proven would be a violation of the town's workplace violence and harassment policy. And in turn, then also a contravention of the council's code of conduct. Harassment is against law and complaints must be dealt with in accordance with the Occupational Health and Safety Act. The investigation by the integrity commissioner was put on hold until an internal investigation on the harassment claim. By third party, that report has now been received by council and dealt with in closed session as a personnel matter, allowing the integrity commissioner to proceed with the public reporting. Of the inquiry respecting the allegations of contravention of the code of conduct. The request to the integrity commissioner was based on a staff report agenda item where councillor Cooper proceeded to question the staff member on technical details. And managerial decisions both associated with the report and with respect to other issues in the same department. That were not the subject matter of the report being presented. Fortunately, the mayor put an end to the questioning, but it resulted in a complaint to the integrity commissioner. According to section four of the code of conduct respecting code conduct at meetings. Section number C states respecting courtesy will be provided to delegations fellow members, staff and members of the general public. Section D continues with in accordance with the Ontario Human Rights Code, the Occupational Health and Safety Act. And the town's workplace harassment prevention policy. All persons will be treated with dignity and respect and environment free from discrimination discrimination and harassment. Section seven of the code of conduct relations with staff includes the statement that members shall refrain from publicly criticizing individual members of staff. In a way that casts this person's on a professional competency and credibility. The OHSA defines workplace harassment as engaging in a course of vexatious commenting or conduct against a worker in a workplace that is known or ought reasonably. To be known to be unwelcome. All municipalities are required by the OHSA to have a workplace violence harassment policy. Since they involve name personnel, these investigations are confidential with their reports combined to a closed meeting of council. The town of Cobalt's policy by law 2010 21 further defines harassment as follows. Harassment is any behavior that dimes, humiliates, or embarrasses a person that a reasonable person should have known would be unwelcome. It includes actions, comments, or displays. It may be a single incident or continue over time. In addition to the above noted definition, the town of Cobalt's policy goes on to provide examples of harassment and how complaints are to be dealt with. Patronizing or condescending behavior, including council meetings and conduct between members of council. Humiliating an employee in front of coworkers, abusive authority that undermines someone's performance or threatens his or her career. Including statements made in jest. So the integrity commissioner decision councillor Cooper immediately following the meeting and again during these investigations claimed that he never intended to embarrass or humiliate staff. However, the detailed and off topic questioning by councillor Cooper evidenced in the recording of the July 12th, 2023 committee of call meeting. Did not enable the staff person to prepare detailed answers in advance for council. Regardless of councillor Cooper's claimed intent, his behavior left that person feeling blindsided, stressed, demeaned, and harassed. His conduct contributing sections for C and D and seven of the code of conduct. Council may choose to impose the following penalties, a reprimand, including an apology to the staff member or suspension of remuneration for up to 90 days. It is the recommended a recommendation of the integrity commissioner. Due to the respondent's reluctance to admit that he had breached the code and the fact that training had been provided to council shortly after the last election. On more than one occasion, the integrity commissioner recommends a suspension of remuneration for up to 90 days. It is also within the role of the integrity commissioner to provide training to councils respecting their obligations under the code of conduct. And the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. Considering this and the past investigation undertaken by this integrity commissioner. It has become apparent that although the overall improvement although. That although overall improvements in meeting conduct have been observed, council could benefit from additional training. I trust this input will be helpful in moving forward in your quest for good governance for the town of Cobalt.
I apologize. Item five adoption of meeting agenda draft motion be it resolved that council approved the agenda of the regular meeting dated April 2nd, 2024 as presented. Need a mover and a seconder? Councillor Anderson and councillor Starchuk? Okay, any discussion on the agenda? All in favor? Carrie. Adoption of previous council minutes draft motion be it resolved that council approved the following minutes as presented. Committee in the whole meeting, March 5th, 2024, special meeting, March 7th, 2024. Special meeting, March 7th, 2024. Second meeting, special meeting, March 26th, 2024. Need a mover and a seconders? Councillor Hughes and councillor Cooper, any discussion on those minutes? Councillor Wilcox?
Thank you, your worship. On the agenda, the minutes for March 7th. It is noted. Wrong minutes, just be a moment.
It's two, March 7th. It's two.
Okay, yes. It was item four. Where councillor Cooper and I had moved a motion to freeze municipal hiring. And I note that. Council. Asked a motion to withdraw the motion. And I just want to note that we rely on Robert's rules of order when it's not specifically mentioned in our procedural policy, but. And the only persons who can withdraw a motion are the mover and the seconder. They would have been asked if they would move and withdraw their motion. And failing that, then the recourse is to defeat the motion. So from my perspective, I think the motion that we moved and seconded is still valid, however. Because the council expressed a desire not to proceed with the motion. Then I will quite happily withdraw my motion in view of council's decision.
Okay, these were minutes of that meeting, so I'm not sure how this pertains to. This meeting, we can't change what was done at a meeting and that's a record of what would happen at that meeting. So we can bring that to a further meeting. Any other discussion on the minutes? Okay, all in favor? Carrie. Item seven staff reports draft motion be it resolved that council accepts staff report as presented. Need a mover and a seconder? Councillor Starchuk and councillor Anderson? Any questions on the reports? Seven point one public works, March 2024. Animal control, there was no report provided. By law enforcement, March 2024. Cobalt Public Library, February 24th, 2024, meeting minutes. Staff report 2024 oh four oh two oh one, 2024 budget update. Councillor, or sorry. Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, just wanted to inform everyone about the budget process. Our last meeting actually was on March 22nd and the working group met to review the data and additional information. We'll be brought to the next meeting, which will be on April the 8th. We're moving forward with everything. One thing though is. Would be Ontario infrastructure. Is just wanted to state that one, they won't consider a request for 15 year term loan at all. It's not the best interest given our current financial situation at this time. And second, before any decisions are made, they are requiring a copy of our approved 2024 budget. And are audited 2023 financial statements prior to any further discussions. So our financial statements are still being prepared by our auditors at this time.
Thank you, Steve. Staff report 2024 oh four oh two oh two amendment number one to user fee by law 2023 dash 33. Staff report 2024 oh four oh two oh three amendment number one to open air burning by law 2021 dash 15. Staff report 2024 oh four oh two oh four amendment number one to zoning by law 2022 dash 24 train station. Okay. There was no further questions? All in favor? Carrie. Items for council consideration, eight point one train station site plan agreement. Draft motion be it resolved that council direct staff to execute the site plan agreement with J H J H T W Holdings Inc. Need a mover and a seconder? Councillor Anderson, councillor Cooper, any discussion on the site plan agreement? No? Okay, all in favor? Carrie. Eight point two City of Timasping Shores letter of support. Rural Transit Solutions Fund funding application. Draft motion. Be it resolved that council will support the funding application to rural transit solutions fund. By the city of Timasping Shores and further that a copy of this resolution be sent to the city of Timasping Shores. I need a mover and a seconder? Councillor Wilcox and councillor Anderson, discussion? Councillor Anderson?
Just wanted to let you know. With the rural transit solutions funding. First of all, it's a hundred percent funded, so it doesn't cost us anything, which is why we can do it. What they're going to be looking at is what trends it's going to be looking at is possibility of. Expanding out to somehow include some of the other communities. An expert looking at our transit and everything to see how we can improve it. And a number of things like that, so this is what this is for. It's just an agreement to Miss Meeshaw's already passed it through. Just because we're also as a partner and we have to agree to the findings.
Hey, anything else on that?
No, I think that's all. Copy of the whole thing somewhere. If any, any of the councillors wanted to.
Okay. Okay, all in favor? Carrie? Yeah, go ahead, Steve.
I will just get councillor Starchuk back.
Thank you. Okay, nine items for council information, nine point one solicitor general response to M P P John Bantoff Fire Truck. Nine point two Cobalt Public Library Open House Invitation, April 13th, 2024. I will be attending, it would be nice if some of the council could attend as well. Nine point three Timasping Health Unit, 2023 year end report to the Board of Health. Nine point four Aqua Cobalt Constructed Wetlands, 2023 annual report. Draft motion be it resolved that council accept the items for council information as presented, I need a mover and a seconder. Councillor Starchuk and councillor Cooper. Any discussion? On any of those items? Again, I'll be attending the open house for the library. It'd be nice to see some council come out and support our public library.
I intend to be there.
All in favor? Carrie. Ten bylaws and agreements, 10 point one bylaw 2024 dash 11 amendment number one. To user fee by law 2023 dash 33. Draft motion, whereas council receives staff report 2024 oh four oh two oh two, which detailed a cost recovery analysis. On user fees with the following recommendations. Increase of $30 to OPP. Increase of $62 to waste management. Increase of eight percent to water operating. Now therefore be it resolved that bylaw 2024 dash 11 being a bylaw to adopt amendment number one to user fee by law. 2023 dash 33 be read a first, second, and third time. And finally pass the second day of April 2024. And further that the said bylaw be signed and sealed by the mayor and clerk. Need a mover and a seconder? Councillor Cooper and councillor Anderson, discussion? Steve?
Thank you, your worship. I just want to inform everyone about the this amendment here. With the OPP, it's increased to just offset the costs yearly. It's gone up an additional fee of. It was a shortfall. Maybe so, we are looking at nineteen thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars to offset OPP costs. This is just on one year, so we are just going with what the municipality is being charged, we're just going with fluctuation with that.
What was the shortfall, 146 or something like that I read? Forty six thousand, so we're gonna with this thirty dollars, we're gonna recruit nineteen thousand?
Yeah, this shortfall here for 2024 would be a shortfall of seventeen thousand and some, and this would offset those costs as well into it.
Where was the 145 I read somewhere, was that on something else? Was that on the water maybe?
Possibly.
So many numbers.
Also for the sixty two is for the waste management and that's going to be billed within the tax levy. Twenty twenty four costs are expected still to be pretty high, but using 2023 user fee charge will create a shortfall in this will take care of that shortfall. And finally, the increase of eight percent to the water operating on it. So we're looking at an increase of forty four dollars and seventy six cents.
Any further questions? Hey, I'd just like to point out, this isn't that the municipality is trying to make money, we're just trying to offset what costs that we're being charged. Okay? All in favor? Carrie. Ten point two bylaw 2024 dash 12 amendment number one to open air burning by law 2021 dash 15. Draft motion, whereas council receives staff report 2024 oh four oh two oh three. Recommending the prohibition of fireworks during a fire ban. Now therefore be it resolved that the bylaw 2024 dash 12. Being a bylaw to adopt amendment number one to open air burning by law 2021 dash 15. Be read a first, second, third time and finally pass the second day of April 2nd, 2024. And further that said bylaw be signed and sealed by the mayor and clerk. Need a mover and a seconder councillor Starchuk and councillor Anderson, discussion? There was just one thing I noticed on it that it says when there's a fire ban declared by the municipality and the ministry. I'm wondering if we could change that wording to end slash or. Because there's times new municipality may declare a burn ban, but the ministry does not. Is it possible to make that change, Steve?
If council would like to proceed with that.
Is council okay with that change?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does that make sure it's in there then? Because provincial bylaw doesn't include fireworks, I think that's ridiculous. You got a fire ban, what better way to set a fire?
Yeah, they leave it up to the municipalities to cover that off. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor? Carrie. Ten point three bylaw 2024 dash thirteen amendment number one to zoning by law 2022 dash 24. Draft motion. Whereas in September 2023, council received an application for a zoning by law amendment. From J H T W Holdings Inc. And a statutory public meeting was held on October 17th, 2023. And whereas the Ontario Northland Railway ONTC filed a letter of concern with the town of Cobalt. And council directed staff to consult with ONTC. To ensure that the concerns are addressed before the draft by law amendment was considered. And whereas staff have prepared a site plan agreement that addressed these concerns. And ONTC was satisfied with the conditions as outlined in the staff report 2024 oh four oh two oh four. Now therefore be it resolved that bylaw number 2024 13 being a bylaw to adopt amendment number one. To zoning by law 2022 dash 24 be read a first, second, and third time. And finally pass the second day of April 2024. And further that the said bylaw be signed and sealed by the mayor and clerk. Need a mover and a seconder? Councillor Anderson, councillor Starchuk? Any discussion? None, all in favor? Carrie. Eleven unfinished business. Eleven point one resolution from E for M. Draft motion, whereas Peggy Young Lovelace on behalf of E for M. The town of Cobalt appointed integrity commissioner addressed council at their meeting on Thursday, March 7th, 2024. And whereas she expressed concern about repeat offenses of attempted direction of staff by councillor Wilcox. Utilizing email, which is contrary to his role as a member of council. And has led to complaints to the integrity commissioner. And whereas Ms. Young Lovelace requested that council assist in the prevention of further complaints. To the integrity commissioner as well as allegations of workplace harassment from town employees. And whereas she recommended council could prevent further complaints by directing that councillor Wilcox only communicate with the town by email. And that all email communication be addressed to a specific email address for that purpose. And not the town manager or other municipal employees. Now therefore be it resolved that council hereby directs that councillor Wilcox shall not email town employees. And further that should councillor Wilcox need to communicate with town employees, that he shall email. Blank at blank. Who will then liaise with the town manager and respond to councillor Wilcox accordingly. Need a mover and a seconder? Councillor Anderson and councillor Starchuk? Okay, discussion? I guess we're gonna need to decide the blanks councillor Cooper.
I reached out to municipal affairs on this. And they recommended that we seek a third party legal opinion. They gave me a free. Site that I can or any of us can go on to for a legal consultation on this. So I think we should defer to the next meeting till we have all the information. I have the paperwork from her, I'll give it to Steve at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
What are we consulting?
Whether this is actually legal or not to stifle the councillors right to contact staff. We don't know how many staff has have been contacted. So I'd like to know a little more details on it, we can reach out to legality of this. I'd like to defer. Please to the next meeting.
Hey, anybody else councillor Hughes?
Yeah, it says here liaise with the town manager, wouldn't all our emails be better off just to go through the town manager? Or is that what we're trying to avoid here?
Well, we're trying to, I'm trying to avoid further complaints and costs to the town.
Okay, most of my emails, I was doing a mistake in replying all a few times, but most of my emails are directly sent to the town manager. Would that not be the best way to serve this? I'll ask the town manager maybe.
It'd be a decision what council would like to move forward with this. It would be a decision what council would like to move forward with this.
Anybody else? Councillor Wilcox.
I would like to ask councillor Cooper if that was a motion that you're making to defer?
Yeah.
So I'll second the motion.
Okay, I believe the rules for, do we have to, we have to vote on this motion before we entertain a new motion? Okay. All in favor? And because I don't have the recorded vote paper in front of me, Steve, could I have you call out the names, please?
Certainly. So the original one was moved by councillor Anderson and seconded by councillor Starcheck. So I'll go with councillor Anderson. Councillor Cooper. Councillor Hughes.
Can I get a clarification, what exactly are we voting on right now?
Draft motion here.
You have a motion to defer.
No, but we're finishing this motion first.
No.
Once a motion has been tabled, councillor Wilcox, if you look at the procedural bylaw, once a motion has been tabled, the motion has to be addressed before a new motion can be brought in. Steve, I believe it's highlighted on the council table in front of my seat.
Nine point three, putting a motion after, so this is nine point three point two, after a motion has been moved and seconded and stated by the chair, it is deemed to be in possession of council. Council may consist, consent to the withdrawal of the motion at any time before amendment or decision.
Motion to defer.
Does council wish to withdraw the motion? And then we vote on the motion. Councillor Wilcox.
I, I am going to file an objection on that, because I believe you have misinterpreted the way motions are handled. When you have a motion and it's on the table, and you have a motion to defer that motion, you vote on the motion to defer. If it's defeated, then you go back to the original motion. That's how it's done.
Councillor Starcheck.
Yeah, I just wanted to get clarification on what this email subject is. Have you decided on that, or?
No.
It'd be nice to have that there, then. Or should it be there before we vote on it?
It, I believe it should be, yes. I would recommend that our email that here, it go through somebody who knows the rules better than I do, the municipal act, to make sure that there's going to be no chance of any integrity commission investigations. Any further ones, we've had enough.
Thank you.
Was that clarification we were getting?
Yes, your worship, a motion to defer is, has to be done versus.
Okay.
So what's the motion?
That was moved by councillor Cooper, seconded by councillor Wilcox.
Steve, could you read the motion for me, please?
Be it resolved that council defer the resolution from E4M until our next regular council meeting on April 30th.
Okay.
Start with councillor Cooper. Councillor Anderson. Councillor Hughes. Councillor Starcheck. Councillor Wilcox. And Mayor Edson.
Four.
Total is be six, four, zero against. Carrie.
Councillor Hughes.
Uh, just the discussion part? Or we gotta move it first?
No, we.
Discussion?
We, we voted.
Okay, yeah, that's fine with this. I'd just like to say maybe we can come up with an email, or somebody's in this, in this blank spot too, maybe by next meeting, yes.
Okay, well, it's deferred till the next meeting, and we can discuss it then. Twelve, new business. Twelve point one, schedule of accounts. Draft motion be it resolved that council receives the following schedules as presented. Schedule number 2024 dash oh four in the amount of $137,699.05. Schedule number 2024 dash oh five in the amount of $316,073.68. A mover and a seconder. Councillor Cooper and councillor Anderson. Okay, any discussion? All right, all in favor? Carrie. Mayor's report, I don't really have anything. I'm currently in southern Ontario for medical reasons, and it's very windy and stormy. Fourteen, closed meetings, there are none. Fifteen, business arising from closed meetings, there is none. Sixteen, confirmation bylaw, draft bylaw, be it resolved that bylaw number 2024 dash fourteen, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council of the corporation of the town of Cobalt, be taken as read a first, second, and third time, the second day of April 2024. And further, that said bylaw be signed and sealed by the mayor and clerk. I need a mover and a seconder. Councillor Starcheck and councillor Cooper, all in favor? Carrie. Seventeen, adjournment. Draft motion be it resolved that the regular meeting of council be adjourned at 7:56 PM. I need a mover and a seconder. Councillor Anderson, councillor Wilcox, all in favor? Carrie. Thank you, everybody.